Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, February 25, 2025, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 3920 Mickey Gilly Boulevard, Pasadena, Texas at 5:30 PM. Board members present, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Ms. Paola Gonzalez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, and me, K.C. Phelan. Board members absent is Ms. Crystal Davila. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that the notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation this evening will be given by Ms. Sullivan and the pledges by Ms. Gonzalez. If you'll please stand with me.
Would you please bow with me? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we do thank thee for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us. Dear Father, we thank you for the many things that we've been able to accomplish in this district through the leadership of our administrators, our teachers, and our staff. We ask that you would be with each one of our students. Dear Father, give them love and protection and willingness to understand as they go through their many different subjects to study. Dear Father, we pray that you would be with our country, lead, guide, and direct those that make decisions that affect us every day, and we pray for those that protect our country, dear Father. We ask that you would give them special protection. We ask that you be with us as we go through the further business of this school district, lead, guide, and direct us as we make decisions, and we pray that they might be beneficial for each purpose stated. We ask that you would forgive us where we fail thee, keep us ever in the center of thy will. These things we ask in thy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
That brings us to the public comments. According to policy BD Local, there are no public comments at this time. Thank you. Public hearing of annual performance report, including the 2023-2024 Texas Academic Performance Report, given by Ms. Donna Summers, Executive Director of Program Support and Achievement. Take it away, Donna.
Oh, good evening, Board and Dr. Powell. It's always fun and exciting to be with you, even if the topic is a public hearing and required by Texas Education Code. So I will read the first part to make sure I don't miss anything, and then I'll hit on a few highlights. This evening, we are fulfilling the requirement of Texas Education Code 39.362 to hold a public hearing related to our annual performance report. The Texas Education Code requires that the report be posted publicly and must include the following components from last year: PDFs of the Texas academic progress reports as distributed by the Texas Education Agency, including links to 2022-2023 financial actual reports, accreditation status and special education designation, campus improvement plan, performance objectives, violent or criminal offense summary, student performance in post-secondary institution, and progress towards meeting House Bill III goals. The communication team compiles and posts the annual performance report on the district website under Required Postings for Accountability each year. So one of the most important things about this public hearing is to make sure that everybody knows where those reports can be found. So I wanted to make sure that you see it. This is the website for Pasadena ISD. Under Required Posts, there are several things, a whole list. If you go to the second one, Accountability, that is where you will find the annual progress reports, I'm sorry, the annual performance report, as well as separated components, so you don't necessarily have to go to the big PDF file to get to everything. Bruce Stone, for right now, is moving all these stuff from the old site to the new site. So if you see a link that isn't there yet, it's because he's still in the moving process. But these will give you three years of our annual performance report, as well as three years of the TAPR, campus improvement plans, our federal report cards, and our school report cards. Most of them all say the same thing, just in a different variation, but the state wants to make sure that we have one document, which is this one, that has everything in it all in one touch. So that is one important thing for today, to know that that is publicly available on the website. So most of these report components were covered last year in prior board reports, Friday notes, and educational spotlights. And as a reminder, the state did not give us ratings in 2023 or 2024, so when you go to those things on the website, even the links to the state will say no accountability ratings are available. But I did want to touch on some great things we've got going on. College and career military readiness. For the class of 2023, all of our student groups, including special education and emergent bilinguals, achieved at least 80% college and career military readiness. That is almost a 20% jump from two years ago. So we're very happy to be celebrating that. And not only that, but our student groups exceeded the state and federal targets that are in accountability. So even though we didn't get to proclaim it from the rooftops with letters and all those things, we've exceeded the state expectations for two years in a row, this time by an average of 26% per group. So that is huge. So our college and career military House Bill III goals from now on are going to be individualized, not just a 5% growth, because we're so far ahead now that any growth is just extraordinary. On the other end of the grade level spectrum is kindergarten readiness. The percentage of our kindergarten-ready students increased by 7.5 points over last year to a total of 63.6% of our students being kindergarten-ready, if they were enrolled in a Texas public school, and this percentage is higher for Pasadena than both the region and the state. And when we consider students who've been in a PK program for at least 80 days, so not just enrolled, but now am attending for half the year, that readiness jumps to 73.4%. Again, higher than the region and the state by at least 10%. So if you look at the beginning, you look at the end, and all the things in between, we're doing some great work that, of course, couldn't happen if we didn't recruit and retain some great teachers. So just in that area, in terms of retention, the average years of experience for our campus leaders is seven years, and our teachers have an average of 10 years and above the state average again. So we're retaining longer than the state average. And our teacher turnover rate, which is 15.7%, is 3% lower than the state's of 19.1. So we have a lot of things great going on. Again, most of what you've seen, but I wanted to make sure that you knew where it was and how the public could get to it. We will also have a printed version available should anyone come to the central office building and would like to see it. So with that, does the board have any questions about the 2324 performance report?
Outstanding to me. Fantastic job.
What do we have to have by state law? Three years?
Yes.
And do they drop, will they drop off every year?
They're dropping off the website, but we still have them available upon request, of course.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Pre-K readiness and kindergarten.
Good stuff.
What an increase. It's unbelievable.
And really speaks to the pre-K program and the importance of all-day pre-K and attendance. Yeah. All right, before moving on, I need to make sure, does the audience have any questions about the 2324 performance report? And with that, I will see y'all for the same dance next year.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Donna.
Thanks, Donna. We're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.076. We will reconvene and open session at 7:00 PM. We're going to reconvene and open session at 7:00 PM. Welcome, everyone.
Let's get the mics. There we go.
There we go. Reconvene at 7:00 PM. We're going to open up with special recognition.
Well, board members, good evening to all of our guests tonight. We're going to start with a very special recognition, and obviously, that's what it's titled, but let me reemphasize, a very special recognition. So as many of you are aware, on Saturday, February 1, 2025, Pasadena ISD gave permission to TCGC, which is the Texas Color Guard Circuit, to host an indoor drumline competition at Pasadena Memorial High School. The all-day event was interrupted at 6:00 PM by a gunman who stepped out from behind a pillar at the entrance of the competition and opened fire, striking one person before being taken down by Cypress Fairbanks' dad, who was quickly assisted by an Angleton ISD employee and four Pearland ISD bandfathers. Thanks to their heroic actions and fast response, lives were truly saved that night, and the suspect was quickly in handcuffs by the Pasadena ISDPD. And I know those minutes seem like hours to many, but due to their heroic efforts, the outcome was very different than what it might have been. We want to celebrate them tonight. I'm going to do this kind of in sections, so bear with me. I'm going to ask them to come up and stay up here at the front. I know that may not be what they are comfortable doing, but I'm just asking, please help me out this evening. And we're going to start first with Mr. Juan Lopez, who is the Cyfair dad. He's also a teacher, is my understanding, and he's going to come forward to be recognized. And then we also have here this evening Mr. Corey Vizi, our Angleton employee, who was, I was told, driving the truck for Angleton High School that night. He probably has lots of roles, but he jumped in to help Mr. Lopez to keep the suspect from doing more harm and physically restraining him. So come on down. Thank you so much. So thank you. Now for our four dads from Pearland ISD, who raced toward the gunfire to help Mr. Lopez and Mr. Vizi to secure the suspect and weapon until our police could run to the scene from another part of the building and take the suspect into custody. So we'll recognize them, one at a time. Mr. Abram Trevino, please come forward to be recognized. Mr. Polo Castillo, please come up, sir. So we have more to honor, so I'm not sure if you want to keep standing, but absolutely feel free to, because there's a lot of heroes here tonight. The man injured that evening was a percussion consultant with Angleton ISD and a hero in his own right. As he fled the building after being shot, he focused on getting his own students out safely, and while he did this, he was assisted by three of our Pasadena Memorial students who helped him get across the street from the school and administered first aid that they learned in their HOSA program or health occupation classes. Their heroic behavior helped him stay conscious and alert until first responders could arrive. So is Mr. Dwight Benjamin here? We're not sure if he's made it yet. He was planning to be here, so if he comes, we will recognize him. Our memorial, Pasadena Memorial High School students, were Michaela Talavera. Please come forward.
Thank you so much.
Also, Charles Mitchell, please come forward to be honored. And last but not least, there was an incredible response from the Pasadena ISD Police Department and the City of Pasadena Police Department and many other law enforcement agencies in the area. Within minutes, the area was secured and the investigation was immediately underway. The cooperation between our police department, PISD, and the Pasadena PD was a testament to two outstanding departments working together. Time and time again, both of these departments prove that they will be there when needed and when they will make every effort to keep our district and our students safe. So please come forward. Chief Jerry Wright, he has with him several. We have Assistant Chief Dunbrower. We have Lieutenant Jackson, Sergeant Banjillon. We have also Detective Mascaro, Detective Dever. Please come forward and be recognized. We also have our own chief, Chief Bill Mcmahan, please come forward for your honor as well. So I'm just going to say, as we reflect on that night...
Good to see you. Thank you so much.
From the bottom of our hearts, we thank all of these heroes that jumped in to save lives. I know that was the worst call I've ever received in my superintendency, and I prayed continuously for the students and staff of all the districts represented as I drove there. I'm sorry to say I broke every speed law, officers, again, I'm so sorry, to get to the school and remain calm. Of course, when I was there, you could tell that the 10 districts have done their job in training our students for sad and unfortunate situations, because they ran, they hid, and of course, we had those that fought. I do want to say, don't mess with banddads. On behalf of myself and the Board of Trustees, thank you for allowing us to publicly honor you. This was our first official board meeting since that incident, and we just say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Mr. Jeff Wagner, our amazing mayor, is here, and that's why we wanted you to stay, because he wants to say a few words. So if you'll come forward, Mayor Wagner, he has some information and proclamations. Thank you.
Again, everything was said how great you guys did. I mean, the word hero is just, it's a great word, but y'all went way beyond being heroes. As mayor of this great city, today, each one of y'all, we're going to name it Y'all's Day here in Pasadena, and it's my honor presenting you with a proclamation saying how much we appreciate what you did, we love you, and again, thank you for taking care of your kids, all our kids. God bless you.
So we would like to honor at this time Mr. Dwight Benjamin, who was, of course, a hero that evening, and we want to make sure we have him come forward. So I told some of our heroes, as they were coming in this evening, to please stay. We have a VIP reception for all the heroes, the officers that are here, the family members. This is probably one of the nicer receptions that a public school district has ever given, so I'm going to have some of my team take you out to this time after pictures, so that you can enjoy that time with your family and friends and those that are here to celebrate you here tonight, and officers from the city, as well as the school district. I hope you will take part in that as well. And the awesome team from Pasadena Memorial is here, so thank you for being here. They're going to go with you as well. They did a great job that evening helping also. And then family members, I just say thank you, thank you, thank you. I think I got to see Mr. Lopez's wife. You can only imagine that evening, how stressful that was, but you put your lives in danger for others, and I know that was stressful for your loved ones. So thank you so much again. Pasadena ISD appreciates you and, like the mayor says, loves you. Thank you so much. And loved ones of the heroes, please head to the reception to enjoy as well. We have lots of goodies for you over there. As they're heading out to their reception, I'm going to bring up Michael Holt, Director of Fine Arts, and give him time to set up up here at the front. He probably doesn't want to follow that, but we're going to bring him on up. Well, first, we got to get him inside the room. It was a little crowded, so. And I do believe he's going to show us short video. All right. You're good. You're okay. We are on third.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present the Laura Bush music makers tonight. We have a little short, one-minute video of their performance at Doby and some pictures from San Antonio when they performed at TMEA. They were chosen as the, one of the orf ensembles to perform out of two in the whole state. So they applied over a year ago, and it's a pretty amazing thing, so let's play the So we're so proud of the Laura Bush Elementary Music Makers, the kids, and then we're also very proud of the two teachers, Ms. Amy Ingles and Ms. Audra Smith. Give them a big round of applause. Very proud principal. Yep.
We have amazing fine arts, and obviously, we start them very young, and that is being recognized at the state level as well. So thank you to our amazing instructors and their principal, who went to celebrate them in San Antonio, and several of our central office staff as well. Someone had the flu, so she didn't get to go. That was me, but congratulations. All right, next, we're going to bring up another special recognition, and so we're excited about this as well. PLC model schools is no stranger to us, as well as Solution Tree. So Dan Hoppy, Executive Director, please come forward. Members of the board, as you know, in 2021, we received the prestigious award of being named Model PLC School District by Solution Tree. This award acknowledges the consistent efforts by all stakeholders to consistently collaborate about student learning and how to provide additional time and support to our students so they may be successful. We're proud to say that we continue to be honored as Model PLC District in the year 2025. So tonight, we're going to honor three schools who have done a tremendous work in this area in model PLCs, schools, and I'd like to turn it over again to Dan Hoppy, Executive Director of CNI. He's going to introduce some of our special guests from Solution Tree, and then they will take the honor of recognizing the schools. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dr. Powell and board members. We're so grateful for this opportunity to share and celebrate these three campuses. I would like to introduce Darren Grissom, the State Executive Director from Solution Tree, who's here to present three special awards to these campuses, and so I'm going to introduce Darren to come on up, and I'm going to step to the side.
Good evening, Dr. Powell, members of the board. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to once again join you, particularly on such a special evening tonight. As Dan shared, my name is Darren Grissom, and I serve as the State Executive Director for Solution Tree here in Texas. And I'm here tonight to celebrate three outstanding schools who have been named Model PLCs. Receiving this distinction is a significant honor and represents a continued commitment to the professional learning community process and ensuring that each and every student receives the time and support that they need to be successful. So moving on to our actual honorees, we'd first like to honor Parkview Intermediate with Principal Christina Serena and other members of the Parkview Cowboy Team. One of 38 intermediate schools in the state of Texas to be named a Model PLC school, and they continue to be an example of schools that promote high-quality learning for all students.
awarded Model PLC status.
To honor only one of 10 high schools in the state of Texas to be named a Model PLC
But in this process, every school, the designation is only good for three years, and you have
School, and that is with Principal Stephen Friend and other members of the Pasadena
to reapply every three years to show that you're continuing the practice and the results
But I'm going to bring up Dr. Kirk Lewis, our Chairman of the MTI, McDonald's Invitational
High School Team.
that you need to maintain that status. So I cannot be here more excited than to congratulate Principal Ririck and her team
Education Foundation Chairman, and he's going to do the honors.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Powell.
for continuing to be recognized as a Model PLC for continued results and high levels of learning.
Congratulations. Very proud. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. The job's served. You're all doing awesome.
It's always a pleasure being here, even if I'm usually in my pajamas by now.
Congratulations. Very proud. Congratulations. Congratulations. Sweet baby.
Naughty.
Congrats.
It's great to be with you this evening to make a couple of quick presentations on
Thank you all for all you do. Congratulations. Good to see you.
We'll see you in three years.
Congratulations. Hey, congrats. Congratulations.
behalf of the McDonald's Texas Invitational Basketball Tournament. I want to express my thanks first to the City of Pasadena and the Pasadena Chamber of Commerce and to the school district. The three of you entities came together 21 years ago and decided this would be a great thing, not only for our district, but for our community, to host the tournament, and you've made that possible throughout all these years. Your visible and financial support of the tournament makes it possible for us to do this each and every year, and it's a major task and undertaking. It makes a huge difference in the lives of our teachers and our kids. Any grants that come as a result of our fundraising during the tournament impact their lives directly and allow us to do some innovative teaching strategies that we would not be able to do otherwise. So I thank you as board members for your continuous support because I know from your end of it that it's not an inexpensive deal or a time-consuming deal for you guys, and I appreciate that support. Also appreciate the Pasadena business community and the sponsors each year for sharing their financial resources as well. Their contributions not only allow us to host the tournament by paying the expenses of the tournament, but it extends far beyond that, so we can offer those mini grants to our teachers. The 80-team tournament is a significant undertaking that requires a lot of funding, and our community has been behind it from the beginning, which is an amazing thing. Through recessions, through hurricanes, through all kinds of business downturn or whatever might be happening, they continue to respond each and every year, and it just impresses me a great deal, to what they're doing on behalf of our kids, not only here in Pasadena, but in Deer Park ISD. Before we present this year's check, I want to commend more than 300 school district employees and community volunteers who, who make the tournament happen. It takes a lot of people to pull this off. We have 197 games over a three-day weekend, and if we didn't have people to staff that and pull it all together, beyond the 32-member steering committee that works year-round, it just wouldn't happen. And so I am deeply appreciative of all those volunteers, deeply appreciative of the 32-member steering committee that boasts their time throughout the year. It's a 12-month process, really a 13-month process to start a tournament and then close it out before the end of the year. So if there are members of the steering committee here tonight, would you please stand and let us recognize you for your work? Stand, but if you have volunteered at any point in the tournament, would you please just kind of wave? Look at that. See, just amazing group of people. We appreciate that so, so much. The steering committee gives out two awards each year to people who have contributed to the success of the tournament. Last month, we were able to present the Barry Harris Extra Effort Award to Bruce Stone, who coordinates so much of our website development, social media, maintenance of everything that goes on in that area. Tonight, we'd like to present the Darla Haygood Volunteer Award. This award goes to an individual or group who provides exceptional service in ways that enhance the experience for our spectators, our sponsors, our visiting teams, our coaches, the game officials, everyone who participates in the tournament. When we talk to our coaches and our referees about the reasons they enjoy coming to the tournament, they talk about the high level of competition, they talk about the organization of the tournament, how smooth everything seems to go. They speak of how everyone welcomes them and makes them feel comfortable in a strange environment. And the site captains, team faciliters, all, all of those who work with those coaches, they just really appreciate that helpfulness and friendliness that they bring to the table. However, as much praise as these individuals get, and the coaches and referees, their highest praise goes to the culinary arts folks who provide all the food for the tournament. You know, if a way to a man's heart is through his stomach, it's double so for coaches and referees because they truly love to come here and participate because they eat well while they're here. We get some of our meals and snacks for the tournament from local restaurants, but the bulk of it comes from our culinary arts programs. Several years ago, we decided to turn away from trying to pull more from our restaurants and decided to open it up for our kids and to participate in a different way than just the athletes. And the culinary arts stepped up and really began doing a phenomenal job for us. They provide breakfast, lunch, and dinner for three days, all kinds of snacks in the morning, the afternoon, and evening. I can attest to that for the weight that I gained during that, that time period. Breakfast tacos, omelets, pancakes, sandwiches, baked potatoes, hot entrees, pot roast lasagna to a complete Thanksgiving dinner at Phillips, followed by all kinds of pastries and cookies and cakes. Just can't imagine how they, how well they feed us. So for every hour of breakfast and lunch and dinner that they prepare, I know there's also hours and hours of cleanup. They stay late. When the rest of us have gone home, they are, they are still at work making it happen. So I truly appreciate that. So tonight, I'd like to present the Darla Haygood Volunteer Award to the Culinary Arts Programs of Pasadena ISD. I'd like Andrea Lynn and Tanya Hager to come up and accept their trophy. We had invited the Culinary Arts folks who helped us there, a couple of dozen of them. But we told them also, you don't have to come. They work so hard. We, we wanted to recognize them if they were available, but knowing how precious their time is, we made that totally optional to them. I do have some who, who were able to come tonight, and I wanted to present them with a certificate for their work. So we have Jasmine Hooker. When the McDonald's Texas Invitational began back in 2003, the steering committee presented a check to the Pasadena ISD Education Foundation for a whopping amount of $10,000. It was small, but it was a significant beginning. Since that time and including this year, the MTI has presented a total of $3.7 million to the education foundations in Pasadena ISD and Deer Park ISD. And that funding goes toward many grants for our teachers that enhance student learning in our districts. As you know, Deer Park allows us to use two of their gems to facilitate our tournament, so in exchange, they get a portion of those proceeds, depending upon the amount of sponsoring revenue they bring in. This year, the tournament will present a check, a check to Deer Park in excess of $50,000. So that's a nice deal for them also. But this year's check to Pasadena ISD, to the Education Foundation, represents the largest single amount given to the foundation since the tournament's inception. So Dr. Powell, Mr. Phelan, and Emily Ontiveris, the Executive Director of the Foundation, if you'll come forward. I am proud tonight to present the Pasadena ISD Education Foundation a check for $223,938 and a little bit of cash.
I was hoping that Dr. Powell would walk through and shake our hands.
No, we've been around you long enough.
Thank you all very much for allowing me to come and...
Absolutely. Thank you. Lots of mini grants headed our way. Thank you. And that wraps up our special recognition.
Wow. If, if tonight's has represented anything, just, you just never know where heroes are. They're, they're amongst us everywhere we go. So let's all be grateful for that. If we would just love each other and be, just watch out for each other, this world would be a better place. And having said that, if you want to slip out, we're going to let you slip out, so we get on with the rest of our board meeting. Thank you.
Or you can stay.
Or you can stay.
If you're getting a job, don't go anywhere.
I think they forgot about that.
We're going to kick off with the consent agenda, the motion on the consent agenda. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to the personnel section.
Mr. President, I move that we approve addenda items A and B.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez.
I'll take a moment to welcome. Is Ms. Vicky Lopez here? An approval for the position of diagnostician in the Special Education Department for the remainder of the school year. Do you have any family and friends with you today?
Yes, I have.
Fantastic. Congratulations. We're happy to have you. Congratulations. And next, we have Luis Esteban Torres. She's not here. I hear there's a wedding. But if you get to congratulate her, it would be for the Assistant Principal of Jackson Intermediate School. So congratulations to her.
Represented by our team from Jackson, they're here tonight.
Oh, so we've got our team here. Well, thanks for coming. Congratulations.
So now, the rest of you, if you would like to slip out, you may slip out now while we conduct the rest of the business. Thank you all. Takes us to the certified personnel and support personnel for 2024-2025, which is information only. Consideration possible approval of department reorganization and employee reclassification. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion.
So board members, as you know, like any school district in Texas, we're facing a tight budget. We're preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. So through attrition, we're looking at every position possible, and we reorg sometimes in order to have a saving. So that's part of this process as well. Y'all know Jamie Burt retired, and she's leaving at the end of this, next month.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to the educational section. Career and Technical Educational, Educational Spotlight presented by Ms. Tanya Hager, Executive Director of CTE.
Busy night for you.
I was going to say, I feel like we've already started our spotlight between our health science students saving lives and our culinary teachers being recognized for their work. Pretty phenomenal. Well, good evening, board members and Dr. Powell, and let me wish you a happy National CTE Month.
Aye.
Yes. It is always exciting to have a few minutes to come share some of the great work taking place in career and technical education in our district, so thank you for this time. I would like to begin by celebrating an award that was just bestowed upon our district. And let me get this going here. Thank you. So Pasadena ISD is one of only 38 districts in the entire state to be named a CTE District of Distinction by the Career and Technical Association of Texas. This recognition honors districts that excel in providing exceptional, high-quality career and technical education programs designed to meet the diverse needs of our students, local communities, and employers. So the work our amazing teachers do as they prepare their graduates for the future workforce is only possible because of the support we receive from all of you, all of the amazing departments that are here, and of course, our campus administration. So thank you all so much for just seeing the value in this work and for continuing to advocate for career and technical education. We appreciate it, and it's nice that the state recognizes that work as well. So to share some overall numbers, we're going to start with our enrollment. So even with all the different options our high school students have, our CTE numbers continue to stay at a high level. We are currently serving just under 11,500 students district-wide. These students are led by... So even with all the different options our high school students have, our CTE numbers continue to stay at a high level. We are currently serving just under 11,500 students district-wide. These students are led by 170 phenomenal teachers, and as you know, we offer programs of study in just about anything a student would be interested in. We have 26 different options. Health science is still second to culinary arts. Go figure, right? Those refs and coaches aren't the only ones that like to eat. So most of our pathways or programs of study end in one or more industry-based certifications. And right now, our students have 92 different certifications available to them. So just to point out the growth in these areas, we were looking at some data from about 10 years ago, and the number of CTE teachers in this district has doubled, and the number of certifications that we offer has increased by 1,700%. So that is amazing growth, and we cannot wait to see what the next 10 years brings. Speaking of certifications, our teachers work very hard to have their students graduate with one or more of these industry-based certifications, and while they are a part of CCMR and they help with campus and district accountability, what they do for our students in terms of job attainment and college acceptance is invaluable. So each year during this time, I stand up here and I report that a new record number of certifications were earned, right? And so this year, it is no different. Our students and our teachers knocked it out of the park, and they set a new record of 5,918 certifications, which was, yes. That was an increase of 940 certifications from just the year before. So they are doing a phenomenal job preparing these students. So some of the highlights from last year, the certifications that were earned, we had a 450% increase in the number of Adobe Premiere Pro certifications earned by our audio-video production students, an 88% increase in electrical certifications, a 73% increase in Autodesk Inventor certifications, and those are earned by our engineering students, and then a 71% increase in certifications in the area of automotive technology. And so this year, testing season is just getting underway, but our numbers are looking really strong, and our welding students are just on fire right now. They've already earned over 100 American Welding Society or AWS certifications just this school year, and we are just getting started. So that's really exciting. As you know, involvement in student organizations is a vital part of what we do in CTE because of the leadership skills that students earn through those experiences, and those leadership skills carry over into every aspect of their life. So here's a new record. Last year, I know, we had a record 360 students advanced to a state-level competition and 62 advanced to a national competition, and that was a 94% increase from the year before. And while we still have several groups that are competing, our numbers this year are looking really good as well. Great, great experiences for those students. So one area that I rarely touch on whenever I stand up here and present on CTE is the academic performance of our CTE students, so I want to take a minute to do that this evening. Every year, we receive data from the Texas Education Agency that compares CTE learners in Pasadena with CTE learners across the state, as well as those within our district that are not CTE learners. They are not CTE students. And what the data showed was that our Pasadena ISD CTE students met or exceeded the performance of other CTE students across the state in every area with the exception of reading language arts, and we were right there with them. Now, when you look at CTE learners within our district versus non-CTE learners, you can see from this chart that our students enrolled in CTE classes performed higher on standardized tests in the area of reading language arts, mathematics, and science, and had a higher graduation rate. So like so many other areas, like fine arts and athletics, CTE gives our students a place to belong. They build these relationships with their teachers. Their teachers act as mentors because they have them. Many of them are in their classes for four years. And so these teachers hold their students accountable, not just for the grades in their class, but for the grades in all of their classes. And so we are so proud of the success of our students and of our teachers, and I want to highlight a couple of those amazing teachers, and one of them just walked out the door, and I wish she had stayed here. So Kevin McElveen, automotive collision repair teacher from Lewis Career and Technical High School, and Jasmine Hooker, amazing culinary teacher at Dobie High School. These two outstanding educators last May were named Pasadena ISD Teacher of the Year and New Teacher of the Year at the secondary level, and both of them are CTE teachers. And to my knowledge, this is the first time that CTE teachers have won both of those awards during the same year, and both of them are so deserving. They work day and night to do what's best for their students and to change the lives of their students. So I'm just so excited about that recognition. So it would not be a CTE presentation without a video, so I am going to show a very brief video, and this one was created around our department's theme this year, which is CTE for the Win, and it shows what winning looks like in career and technical education and the important role CTE plays in the lives of our students, as well as in our community. I think I actually have to hit the play button right here. Very strict time constraints set by my amazing boss, Dr. Lopez. I was only able to share a fraction of the good work taking place in CTE. However, don't fear, we're sending home this lovely one-page infographic with you so you can read more about the good work happening in CTE across the district, and I will be sending out quiz questions in the morning, so make sure you spend some time on this tonight. On a serious note, my team and I would like to thank you for all you do for CTE. None of these wins would be possible without your support, so thank you so much.
You. Thank you. Great job. Consideration possible approval of the applications for TEA low attendance waivers for the campuses listed. Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of an agreement between Pasadena Independent School District and the Western Governors University for a nursing administration practicum for a nursing student.
Go move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan. It's fast. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Harris County Department of Education Services for the 2024-2025 school year. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the continuation of a Junior ROTC, Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, JROTC unit at South Houston High School.
Go move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Yes, ma'am.
No, those are for the next item. I have a feeling they're going somewhere.
That's Air Force and South Houston, I think.
And I can tell you, South Houston... Oh, here he is, back here. And they were also represented last night at our Gulf Coast Educators Credit Union Meeting, so thank you, sir.
Master Sergeant, thank you.
He was sitting by his principal, so thank you.
So I understand that Memorial is also, Pasadena Memorial is also part of this. How many kids do we have at Pasadena Memorial? How many students from Pasadena Memorial are currently... How many do you have in your program at South Houston?
Thanks, Master Sergeant.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Absolutely. One of the best programs, I think. Consideration possible approval, J. Frank Dobie High School JROTC team members to travel to the Nationals A National High School Drill Competition in Daytona Beach, Florida on May 1 through the 7th, 2025. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Discussion. That's them right there.
Thank you so much for being here. Yes.
Wow.
How wonderful.
Well, then, I guess we've got some big shoes to fill this year.
Yes.
Excellent. We're very proud of you, so you know what you've got to do.
Great.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Y'all can slip out if you want to. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Your board president was in JROTC.
Right.
At Pasadena ISD.
Marine Corps. Thank you. Just wanted the record to reflect. Student achievements is for information only, which brings us to the financial section. Consider peration and possible approval of budget amendments for the January 2025. Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of resale of foreclosed properties for delinquent taxes at Zero Georgia Street. Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion.
So it's right near a business, but yes, it's unimproved property. There's nothing on it, correct, Kevin? Land only. Thank you. I was looking for you. I see you now. I need to bring my glasses to these meetings, obviously.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval to adopt a board resolution declaring an emergency and authorizing employee compensation in response to the snow days on January 21st through January 22nd, 2025.
Go move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
I just know the staff always appreciates y'all's support in making sure they get paid for those days, so thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Operations and Technology Section. Consideration possible approval of a design services agreement to LTY engineers for the 2022 Bond Domestic Piping Replacement at South Houston Intermediate School Project in the amount of $70,380 and a total project budget of $1,075,800. Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion.
Question.
Yes, sir.
This is the ghost of Fred Roberts. The design service fee, that 7%, is that normal? Is that the going rate?
Yes, 7%. We've been using that for years. Typically, more involved with existing condition, unknown things that have to be worked.
I was under the impression that it was more in the 6.3s.
That's for new construction.
Okay. Educating me on that. Blame it on Fred.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number 19, for the 2022 Bond Safety and Security Project in the amount of $101,539.06.
Go move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number 02, for the 2022 Bond New Bailey Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $14,872. Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
So even though they're breaking ground, we were planning to do that when the weather was just a little warmer for y'all. I know we got the parks one done, and then kind of holidays and things set in, so we're looking at possibly doing three in the day, but if that's too, I guess, much, we may do two, but is it March or April?
We're looking at both of them.
So we will get those dates to you and get your preferences and get those done with, working with the campuses.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number 02, for the 2022 Bond New Bailey Elementary School Replacement Project in the credit amount of $14,358.
Go move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? We will take the money. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number 04, for the 2022 Bond New Bailey Elementary School Replacement Project in the credit amount of $38,000.
Go move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of final change order Number 001 for the 2022 Bond HVAC Replacement Group 1, Package 1, project in the credit amount of $144,101.97.
Go move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of final change order Number 001 for the 2022 Bond HVAC Replacement Group 1, Package 2, project in the credit amount of $235,774.97.
Go move.
Motion by Mr. Marshall. Kendrick? Second. Who seconded?
Ms. Sullivan.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
President, we've got several items here on the Department, and my concern, I thought maybe Kevin could address them, and are we looking at it not being completed until next year?
There's been some delays. We've been working with the city on some things they've required, but what do you But what do you think the completion date realistically is?
It's really phased, building A. Top is. And then, we'll have some other smaller pieces.
So, it's just taking longer. I understand that the city's not been real helpful on permits.
It was, there were some delays with the city for permitting, but they've, they've been changes and...
They've had some good meetings lately.
We have, yeah.
We've been discussing that, and they've had some very productive and...
Off savings.
Yes.
And the buses all have a place to park? Right.
We're parking them at my house. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Thank you, Kevin.
Any other questions? They are. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number 06, for the 2022 Bond HVAC Replacement Group 1, Package 3, project in the amount of $111,257.69.
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. All in favor, any discussion, I'm sorry? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of change order Number 001 for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the amount of $750,000.
So, move.
Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number A-036 for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the credit amount of $500,000. Motion by Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number A-037 for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the amount of $61,023. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? About to lose our secretary. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number A-039 for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the amount of $31,278.
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number A-040 for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the credit amount of $93,800.
So, move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of construction contract with Mobile Communications America for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the amount of $73,487.34.
So, move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but this will allow our communications there at the tower that exist at Transportation. So, we've been using somewhere else with the city, and that was a temporary solution. So, we're very glad this is going to be a possibility.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the conveyance of a water meter easement, Number 1, for the 2022 Bond New Jessup Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $1.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. You paid for that, didn't you?
Dennis.
Any other, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the conveyance of a water meter easement, Number 2, for the 2022 Bond New Jessup Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $1. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the conveyance of a sidewalk easement located at Queen Street, South Property Line of the 2022 Bond New Williams Elementary School Replacement Site in the amount of $1. Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If only everything cost a dollar. Consideration possible approval of routers and switches, E-Rate CSP Number 25P019LP, to NetSync for the purchase of 1,441 routers and switches for an estimated total amount of $10,145,000.
We'll move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick. Second by Ms. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of UPS replacement, E-Rate CSP Number 25P020LP, to V Prime Tech, Inc., for the purchase of 46 Cyber Power UPS for an estimated total amount of $63,000.
So, move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. I'm assuming somebody knows what all that is.
This lady right over here.
Perfect. Good, good to go. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of access points, E-Rate CSP Number 25P-021LP, to NetSync for the purchase of 1,432 access points for an estimated total of amount of $1,490,000. Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
All of these items make our technology work, obviously, and more proficiently.
Perfect. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of LAN cabling, E-Rate CSP Number 25P-022LP, to Accutec for an estimated total amount of $510,000.
So, move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Construction updates are for information only, which takes us to the miscellaneous section. District-wide intruder detection auto-report findings are for information only. Agenda item Number 2 serves as notice of a public meeting and notice of proposed contracts for legal services. Consideration and adoption of resolution approving contingent fee legal services contract, including findings needed for submissions of contingent fee legal services agreement and request for expedited review by the Texas Attorney General.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez. Second by Ms. Gonzalez. That was a mouthful. Any discussion?
I just want to clarify for everyone that this is at no cost to the district.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Outstanding. Consideration and adoption of contingent fee legal services agreement with Thompson &amp; Horton LLP, Eland &amp; Bonin PC, and Oh Hanlon D. Marath &amp; Castillo PC.
We'll move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick. Second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to the public comments. According to BED Local, related topics not listed on the agenda, 30-minute allotment. We have our speaker here. Mr. Smith?
Ty Smith.
Ty Smith. Going once. Going twice. Mr. Smith is not here. Which takes us to set the date for the next regular board meeting on Tuesday, March 25, 2025. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll adjourn the meeting at 8:11 PM.